I call the meeting to order for the June 13th study session. Welcome. Uh, Madam, or Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Wonderful. We're now going into current business and the first item is clarification of items on the consent calendar. Councilmember Kleiman, do you need clarification on any items on the consent calendar?
I do not.
Councilmember Stapleton?
None.
Councilmember Grant?
None.
Councilmember Wigan?
I do not.
Councilmember Avery?
I have none.
Member Protem?
None.
And I have none. Wonderful. Next, we're going into a proclamation recognizing Ben Huang. All right. This is the only time I'll allow clapping in these chambers, but especially for Ben. Ben, why don't you come on up? Come on up to the podium. I'll read the proclamation. I know the Mayor Protem has some words to say as well. City of Newport Beach proclamation, whereas Benjamin, Ben Huang, graduated from Newport Harbor High School in 2019, where he played four years of baseball and two years of football. Ben applied to, was accepted by, and enrolled in the United States Naval Academy. In the entire esteemed history of the U.S. Naval Academy, Ben is only the 55th Rhodes Scholar ever. Pretty impressive, Ben. Pretty impressive. Ben was only one of 32 Rhodes Scholarship winners out of more than 840 applicants from 244 schools. And local sports writer Richard Dunn wrote a glowing profile of Ben earlier this year in which Dunn noted that Ben Rhodes, on the crew team his freshman year at Navy, has played volleyball on the Navy club team, is the ninth company operations officer, vice president of the Navy Surf Club, and a volunteer with the Midshipman Action Group, Mids for Kids program, as well as serving as a pleat summer squad member, his favorite leadership position at the Naval Academy. I, Noah Blom, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby recognize Ben Huang. Thank you so much, Ben. Amazing. And Ben, you're more than welcome to say a few words. If you don't want to say any words, that's fine too, and I'm sure we can say something for you.
Oh, yeah. I won't touch this, I guess. I'm really appreciative of like all the support I've got from Newport Beach and Newport Harbor community growing up, and there's just no way I'd be in the position I am today without that. Thank you.
So, Ben is homegrown, obviously, graduated from Newport Harbor, and I know how proud your family is of you. They've told me on multiple occasions, because it's just, it's so impressive what you've been able to accomplish so far. And I say so far because quite frankly, you know, we see this picture right here. That was just, what, a month ago?
Yeah, less than a month ago, only a few days.
So congratulations on your graduation. Wherever you end up serving, you'll have the American flag with you, and it's just, and a whole bunch of people behind you. And so I just wanted to say, certainly on behalf of me and my family, thank you so much for serving our country. Thank you for the decision to go into the Navy, and what you're about to accomplish is just incredible. So, thank you, Ben, and this recognition is well deserved.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Avery?
Yeah, congratulations, Ben. I'm just curious, how's the surf at Annapolis?
Oh, it's not good at all. Two hours to closest beach, so...
Yeah, thank you.
Wonderful. If you'd like, we'd take a picture by the flag.
Awesome. All right. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Perfect.
All right. Next, we're going to recognize Newport Mesa Unified School District high school students. And after I read each proclamation, a team's representative can speak, and then we'll take some photos. All right. The first proclamation goes to the members of the Newport Harbor High School wrestling team, who were coached by Dominic Balone. Let's go through. This is Anthony Mono, Skylar Gassel, and Deuda Rodriguez. Wonderful. The proclamation from the City of Newport Beach. Three team members from the Newport Harbor High School wrestling team won CIF Southern Section Championships. Anthony Mono, a sophomore, finished the year with a 39-9 record and won the CIF Southern Section Boys Inland Division Championship at 145 pounds. This is the only time it's appropriate to say someone's weight over the mic, by the way. Skylar Gassel, a junior, finished the year with a 36-6 record and won the CIF Southern Section Girls Eastern Divisional Championship. Leave that one out. Deuda Rodriguez, a junior, finished the year with a 36-0 record, wow, and won the CIF Southern Section Girls Eastern Division Championship, Master Meat Championship, and State Championship. Wow, that's really impressive. Skylar Gassel and Deuda Rodriguez are the first two girls CIF Championships in Newport Harbor High School history. That is amazing. Congratulations, girls. Deuda Rodriguez is the first Newport Harbor High School wrestler to win a state championship in school history. Again, I'd like to give a round of applause for that. Therefore, I, Noah Blom, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby recognize Anthony Mono, Skylar Gassel, and Deuda Rodriguez. Thank you so much. If you'd like to come up and say a couple words, we'd love to have all of you. Don't be shy, it's okay. We're really nice.
Hello. Anthony Mono is apparently enjoying his summer vacation, but our lovely ladies are here. I just want to thank you for taking the opportunity to recognize them and all the hard work that they put in to get to the level that they're at, and they got another year, so expect to see them back here next year.
Wonderful. Thank you, Coach. Wonderful. We'll go up and take some pictures with you guys. Wonderful. The next proclamation goes to the members of the Coronamar High School wrestling team, who are coached by Mark Alex, Zion Bowling Hernandez, and Eugenio Franco. Clearly, we have a lot of harbor people in the audience right now. It's okay, I'm CDM, it's all right. All right. City of Newport Beach proclamation. Two team members of the Coronamar High School wrestling team won a CIF Southern Section Championship and a Masters Meat Championship. Zion Bowling Hernandez, a junior, finished the year with a 44-14 record and won the CIF Southern Section Boys Inland Division Championship. Eugenio Franco, a junior, finished the year with a 58-8 record and won the Masters Meat Championship. Therefore, I, Noah Blom, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby recognize Zion Bowling Hernandez and Eugenio Franco. And gentlemen, we'd love to have you up to say a few words, or your coaches.
Thank you very much for honoring our athletes. All these wrestlers from both schools work so hard. It's proof that hard work pays off, and just like the ladies, our guys will be back next year for their senior year and hopefully get the same success. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Congratulations. We'll meet up for a photo by the flag.
I'll wait till they're done. Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
All right. And, one, two, three. All right, and one, two, three. Perfect.
Good job, Stacy.
Wonderful. The next proclamation goes to the Newport Harbor High School Boys Volleyball Team, who are coached by Andrew Marby. City of Newport Beach proclamation. Whereas the Newport Harbor High School Boys Volleyball Team won a CIF Southern Section Division One title for the second consecutive year. Well done, boys. The Boys Volleyball Team are the undefeated Sunset Surf League Champions, or Champions, and hold a 36-3 overall record. The Boys Volleyball Team won tournament championships at the Best of the West Invitational in San Diego, as well as the Santa Barbara Tournament of Champions. Head coach Andrew Mayberry was named CIF Coach of the Year, and senior Luca Cersei Kirchi was named, uh, Kirchi's, Luca Kirchi was named CIF Player of the Year. Well done, guys. Team members Jake Reed and Riggs Guy received all CIF Division One honors, and this is the sixth CIF championship in program history. For the fifth consecutive year, a Newport Harbor High School Boys Volleyball Team earned a trip to the CIF Southern Section Division One Finals. Therefore, I, Noah Blom, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby recognize the Newport Harbor Boys Volleyball Team. Who's going to talk? The whole team is welcome to come up and say some things if they want.
He's coaching, always.
I like it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, all city council for giving us this honor and recognizing the efforts of these guys. You know, there's a great tradition of success at Newport Harbor in volleyball, but these guys have stepped up and added their own stamp to it, being the first team ever to go back-to-back. And it's a really special group. That was a great, a great community night as well. Credit goes to CDM for making the final as well. We were fortunate to win the match, but that was a really unique showcase of our community to be, have two schools present in that match was a special thing. So, thank you for this honor, and these guys deserve it, and it's a great moment to celebrate them.
Well done, guys. Thank you. Let's grab a photo real quick.
One, two, three. And one more. One, two, three. All right. Thank you.
All right, and the last proclamation goes to the Coronamar High School Debate Model United Nations Team, who are coached by Laura Mayberry. City of Newport Beach proclamation. Whereas the Coronamar High School Speech and Debate Model United Nations Team won the 2022 Civic Learning Award for Excellence at the California Department of Education, and the California Department of Education chooses one school for the award annually. The Civic Learning Award is presented to a school who has shown exemplary efforts to engage students in civic learning. The Speech and Debate MUN team has helped raise awareness of local issues and increase political engagement amongst their campus community through the coordination of guest speakers, and meetings, and sponsorship of an annual voter registration drive. Therefore, I, Noah Blom, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, and on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby recognize the Coronamar High School Speech and Debate Model United Nations Team. Thank you. Please feel free to come up. I know you guys are good at giving speeches, so, and civic engagement, so, I'd love, you're all welcome to come up.
I think the Speech and Debate MUN team naturally lends itself to being interested in national and international politics, but our team has really stressed the importance of local governance, because it's what affects us most acutely on our daily lives. So I think having us here today really helps reinforce that for my students, and so I'm very appreciative.
I just wanted to say thank you so much. I know that we had the opportunity to have a few guys come speak. Special shout out to Will O'Neill, Joe Stapleton, and Lauren Kleiman, and help get people engaged over the past school year. We really hope to be able to continue to foster that sort of community of civic learning inside CDM, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you.
And one, two, three. All right. Thank you.
United Nations Team, who are coached by Laura Mayberry. City of Newport Beach proclamation. Whereas the Coronamar High School Speech and Debate Model United Nations Team won the 2022 Civic Learning Award for Excellence at the California Department of Education, and the California Department of Education chooses one school for the award annually. The Civic Learning Award is presented to a school who has shown exemplary efforts to engage students in civic learning. The Speech and Debate MUN team has helped raise awareness of local issues and increase political engagement amongst their campus community through the coordination of guest speakers, and meetings, and sponsorship of an annual voter registration drive. Therefore, I, Noah Blom, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, and on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby recognize the Coronamar High School Speech and Debate Model United Nations Team. Thank you. Please feel free to come up. I know you guys are good at giving speeches, so, and civic engagement, so, I'd love, you're all welcome to come up.
I think the Speech and Debate MUN team naturally lends itself to being interested in national and international politics, but our team has really stressed the importance of local governance, because it's what affects us most acutely on our daily lives. So I think having us here today really helps reinforce that for my students, and so I'm very appreciative.
I just wanted to say thank you so much. I know that we had the opportunity to have a few guys come speak. Special shout out to Will O'Neill, Joe Stapleton, and Lauren Kleiman, and help get people engaged over the past school year. We really hope to be able to continue to foster that sort of community of civic learning inside CDM, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. So for all of you that did come for the proclamation, you are more than welcome to get up and leave at this point. You don't have to feel, and I won't say another word about it.
Thank you.
A pleasure.
Thank you.
Well done.
They said they already heard you speak. It was enough.
To Joe Stapleton, who convinced us not to be city council members.
As they file out, we're going to move on to study session number four. We're going to receive an overview about the improvements to the Santa Ana Delhi Flood Control Channel.
Hi, Mayor Blom, and members of the council. My name is Melissa Passa. I'm the senior project manager with Orange County Public Works for this exciting project. Today, I'm going to be presenting the Santa Ana Delhi Channel Improvements Project. Today, we're going to go over just a little bit of background on the project, take a look at some of the conceptual plans at this early stage in design, look at the project schedule and how we plan to engage the community, and then provide some opportunities for questions. So this particular project is located within the Orange County Flood Control District Santa Ana Delhi Channel. It begins at the Bayview Trail Pedestrian Bridge at Upper Newport Bay and extends just downstream of Mesa Drive. You can see, I kind of separated this reach to look at the lower project reach and the upper project reach. That'll give you a little bit perspective when we go through some existing condition photos in the next few slides here. A little bit of background on this channel. The channel is comprised of mixed materials, and what that means is the channel slopes are earthen, riprap with large rocks, and concrete lining, all battling erosion. These two images down, that you see down here, the left side is that lower downstream limit at the Bayview Trail Bridge, and then the right image is where that upper limit is, kind of near the Newport Beach Golf Course at Mesa Drive. Next, I'm just going to go through a few before and after pictures to show you what the project will be accomplishing. Here, you can see, this is that lower reach, kind of towards the Bayview Trail Bridge. On the left side, you can see that erosion that's ascending all the way to the chain link fence line, and then on the right side, you can kind of see how that channel slope is standing nearly vertical. These images also paint a pretty good picture of that as well. You can see that right side near the Newport Beach Golf Course is highly eroded and standing nearly vertical, and on the left side, you can see that we have installed some concrete lining to further fortify that section that's along Anniversary Lane. Some additional background, the channel system was constructed in 1965, and in 1991, the Orange County Flood Control District received U.S. Army Corps of Engineers permit approval for an upstream portion. However, we were stipulated that there would be no future permits issued to the Flood Control District without providing a comprehensive environmental mitigation program for the entire channel system improvements. And so these mitigation requirements are summarized in the project's environmental impact report, which brings me to the three primary objectives of this overall project. All three objectives are of equal importance to the Flood Control District, the first being obviously to provide flood control protections and bring that up to current design standards of 100-year storm protection, and then the second being to decrease local scour along the channel, which will also reduce sediment transport to the bay and improve water quality, and then the third being to provide that habitat restoration and mitigation for the cumulative impacts associated with the entire channel system. Some important considerations that the project team has taken into account, just taking a look at the different boundaries of the project limits here. You can see that there is the upper, there is the golf course here, which does flood during large storm events. It's also existing open space and outdoor recreation, which we want to limit the impacts during construction. And then on the left, you can see that's Anniversary Lane, which is a neighborhood. We want to make sure that we're communicating with residents when construction of this project would occur, also reducing noise and making, and keeping into consideration working hours. We also have the Muth Interpretive Center, which is a great location to engage the community of this project, provide project information, as well as engage in the volunteer groups that work up and around Upper Newport Bay. We also have the multi-use trail system. We know this is a highly utilized trail system, and we have some great opportunities to provide some trail improvements here, particularly this reach between Burt Street to the Bayview Trail Bridge. And then, which brings me to the Bayview Trail Bridge. This bridge has experienced significant erosion, such that it was rehabilitated in 2017. This project would be replacing that bridge to expand the entire channel system, as well as provide some additional foundation improvements. So overall, the scope will be providing flood control improvement. We also need to improve storm patrol maintenance. Right now, we don't have access on both sides of the channel to be able to storm patrol this channel system, so this project will be improving access. We will also be improving the multi-use trail system, creating habitat, and of course, replacing that bridge. So these are just some images. I have this little inset on the bottom left here to kind of orient you of where we're at. This is at the Bayview Trail Bridge. Looking down, you can see and experience that erosion that the bridge experiences. This is a very important location for the project, where you're going to see a lot of change, a lot of improvements. This is the downstream section of the bridge. This is where everything comes together. That bicycle trail from University Drive combines with the equestrian and the bike trail and the pedestrian trail here, so we're looking at some great improvements that we can connect this, this area. Here's that Burt Street connection up, up towards Mesa Drive and Burt Street. You can see there's already that trail system coming down that driveway. We also have the maintenance gates here to limit vehicle access. Okay, so here's some good images of what the conceptual design will be. This is a section of the channel, kind of looking towards Mesa Drive. You'll see on the left side, this is where Anniversary Lane would be. It's a maintenance road for our storm patrol crews, and on the right side, it's also a maintenance road, but will be open to the public to provide additional trail systems here. The channel will be essentially doubled, so where you're seeing that little water low-flow section there, that's about where the existing channel is located. We're going to be widening the channel to provide additional habitat, and then provide some resiliency for climate change and coastal adaptation. Here's just a cross-section of the bridge, very similar features to what I showed before. This is actually a little simulation video to kind of give you a good idea of what this will all look and feel like, and how it will tie into the Upper Newport Bay aesthetics, the natural California plant palette. You can see we have this large open space just at the bottom of the Bayview Trail Bridge. We'd like to really engage the community to see what they'd like to see there, some interpretive signage, some education opportunities, maybe a bike repair station. And then on the right, you can see that open multi-use trail it would be creating, which is currently an undeveloped lot. Okay, and then, of course, that regional trail linkage, this is that open area that I was talking about, where we have some opportunities to engage the community to see what they would like to see here. And then, more importantly, we'd like to look at the project schedule. So the yellow circles here are design, and then the orange circles are construction. You can see we're overlapping those. We really want to make sure that our contractor comes on board so that he can, they can speak with the community, also with our regulatory agencies, and then make sure that everyone understands what the construction is going to be like, and to know what to expect during construction for this project. Some two very important meetings that I noted on here is when we're going to engage the community. We plan to go out and host an open house next month at the Muth Center, and then we'll also engage them before construction with our contractors, so they can understand what to expect during construction. Here's just a summary of the community engagement activities we have planned here. On June 21st, Supervisor Foley will be hosting a walking tour in Upper Newport Bay. Our project team is going to go ahead and set up a booth over by the Muth Center, over by Bayview Trail Bridge, just so that the people that are the trailgoers, or maybe not in close proximity to the project to obtain mailing notifications, can pick up a project flyer, pass it out to their fellow trailgoers, and then get the word out for that open house, which we plan to host in mid-July, and then, of course, the pre-construction community meeting, which we are anticipating in summer of 2024. Here's just some contact information if you guys are interested in any more information on the project. There's the email. We will have a project-specific website. Please go ahead and feel free to subscribe and get these project notifications. We'll be sending out these project activity, project update notifications, like you're seeing on the right here. And so this email is provided for those that would like to get more project information. That's all I have. If you guys have any questions, let me know.
Wonderful. Thank you so very much. We'll bring it up here. Councilmember Wigan?
Yeah, just north of where the bridge is, there's a significant amount of equestrian activity there. They do, you know, lessons, they do riding and training and stuff. Is that kind of a use that's just, you know, since it's a dirt, a little bit of dirt, they get to use that for right now, and it's just kind of, they're encroaching on the public land, but when this gets built, that won't exist anymore, correct?
That is correct, yes. Currently, it is an equestrian arena. We do plan to make sure to engage them, understand how we can best incorporate their uses, but unfortunately, the arena itself will not be able to be in operation with this flood control project. But unfortunately, the arena itself will not be able to be in operation with this flood control project. They do have a use permit, and so they do understand that this project has been a long time coming. It's just a matter of they've been able to get the use out of that undeveloped lot until this project could be completed.
Gotcha. So I take it when you have the public meetings, they'll get notified too?
Absolutely.
Perfect. Thank you.
Wonderful. Any other council comments? Excellent. Let's go to the public on this.
Thank you, Mayor Blum, and members of the council. As you know, my name is Jim Mosher. As you may or may not know, I know this area well because my brother raised his family on Anniversary Lane, which is this Newport Beach street paralleling the channel. And for better or worse, that's largely the reason I live in Newport Beach. The question I have, or comment, is I assume the county supervisors like you are concerned about the prudent expenditure of public funds. And so the question is about the bridge. I believe we heard that the bridge had been replaced, and I recall this, in 2017. That's only six years ago. And so the question is, was it anticipated in 2017 it would only have a six-year life? Or is that a new surprise and extra expenditure we could have avoided? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public on this end? Wonderful. We'll bring it back up here. Seeing no other comments from council, thank you very much. Very helpful. Do we have any, we need anything from, no? Wonderful. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mayor.
Wonderful. The next item is an overview of the city-owned Balboa Yacht Basin property located at 829 Harbor Island Drive. Mr. Juris?
Thank you, Mayor Blum and city council members. My name is Simone Juris, Community Development Director. And with me, joining me, is Lauren Wooding Whitlinger. She's our real property administrator. What we want to talk to you today about is the Balboa Yacht Basin. If we can get on the screen there real quick. Before I hand it over to Lauren here, Balboa Yacht Basin is a facility that has buildings with commercial and kind of a restaurant use, office use, and a little bit of residential, plus we have the boatyard West Basin Marina over there. Over about 170 slips, and what we're going to talk to you about is those buildings on the top of the screen, and focus on those. Those are at the end of their useful life. The discussion we want to have with the council is, what would you like to do with these buildings there? We have some ideas, maybe just to partner with the private sector, have them invest into these buildings, and maybe do a revenue-sharing type of agreement of some sort. So that's really the context of what we want to talk to you about. I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to Lauren, and she'll make the presentation, and then we'll get your feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Lauren Whitlinger with the Real Property Division. As Simone mentioned, we are here to talk about the Balboa Yacht Basin as it's known. It's located south of Pacific Coast Highway and south of Bayside Drive at the terminus of Harbor Island Drive. The property is horseshoe-shaped and contains 172-slip marina. On the east side of the site, there is a shipyard, and as Simone mentioned, on the north side of the property, there is five consecutive buildings that contain a variety of commercial uses. The parking lot serves all of the uses on the site as common parking. And so there are some upcoming projects that we wanted to point out. The Basin Marina lease expires in 2026, and that is under negotiation right now. Staff anticipates coming back to council soon with terms of the lease for your consideration. We also have the city docks that are nearing the end of their useful life and are slated for replacement under a capital improvement project. The area Simone mentioned is highlighted there in green. There are five buildings, and they are a mixture of one- and two-story structures. There are also a mixture of city and third-party uses at the site there. The uses include commercial tenants, like the Galley Cafe Restaurant, that has been at the site since 1957, a yacht broker, some general office uses, three residential apartments, and storage garages. The garages, it should be noted, are allocated to slip tenants in the marina. The existing condition of the property we wanted to highlight, this is one of the apartments that is vacant after the most recent tenant left. There are a variety of unpermitted improvements and finishes and fixtures in the unit that are aged and would need to be replaced in order for the unit to be habitable and re-leased. The garages are on the first floor of most of the five buildings and are in various deteriorating condition as well. There is evidence of dry rot and water damage in a lot of the units. The siding at various portions of the buildings are showing signs of wear and tear and dry rot and damage as well. The paving at the site is in fair condition, but shows evidence of damage and patching and repairs. But it's uneven and doesn't, water flow during storms is not great. It's kind of directed into the buildings, unfortunately. The utility systems in the buildings are in kind of various conditions. They've been repaired and replaced over the years. We've had some recent incidents of plumbing failures, specifically with some root intrusion, as you can see on the photos. But the systems are all outdated at this point. For reference, the structures were actually built in the late 1940s, early 1950s. Currently, the city is averaging around $40,000 per year in maintenance expenses. The facility is scheduled for repainting in the upcoming fiscal year, and we have done various roof patching over the years, but the most significant replacements were last done over the residential units in 2012. In 2019, Kaiser Marsden and Associates completed a highest and best use analysis of the site and determined that the existing rents for all of those third-party uses were under market rate, really due to the age and condition of the units themselves. It should be noted, the report indicated that expansion of uses at the site and square footage would be severely limited by the parking that's required. And then the report included some conceptual redevelopment ideas, and those included increasing the density of the storage, increasing the density and the square footage of the office and residential uses, and it proposed no change to the restaurant use. Because the improvements are at the end of their useful life, maintaining them in their existing condition or replacing them will be at significant expense. Staff is estimating that the cost to redevelop those buildings will be between $8 and $10 million. Current revenues for the site, including the marine shipyard and the slips, is averaging around $3.5 million. And then for just the tenants in that building on the north end of the site, we're looking at about $350,000 for the current fiscal year. So as Simone mentioned, we've outlined kind of some options for your consideration. We can maintain the existing improvements as-is. That would be at the city's expense. We could go out and redevelop the buildings, also at the city's expense, or we could consider going out to the private markets and partnering with a private developer to redevelop the site, and that would be at their expense. So we'd like to get your feedback and your thoughts on kind of those three concepts, and I'm happy to provide any additional information.
Wonderful. Councilmember Stapleton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Back in the day, the harbor department was upstairs, and has that been vacant for years? And what's gone on with that space?
Yes, the harbor department was located in the second floor of one of the buildings, and when that staff relocated to City Hall, we re-leased those spaces as offices, so they are currently occupied.
Okay, and then remind me who's managing the slips over there? Is that the city, or do we outsource that to somebody?
We outsource that to a third party. It's Bellport Group right now.
So the revenue we're getting is offset by whatever we're paying them to do that, I'm assuming?
Yes, correct. There's a management fee that we pay to them that is not tied to the revenues of the slips.
If there was a world where we did redevelop it, do you know where we're at as far as market value on the slip fees that we're charging these boats? Are they below market? Are they at market? If we improve that overall area, could we increase the rents that we're charging?
It would somewhat depend on the services that were provided at the site, but we have recently done an appraisal of the slip rents there, and they're slightly below market, but not too far off.
Have you guys discussed parking options? I mean, could we do elevated buildings with parking underneath? I mean, I'm assuming there's options available.
So we haven't done a comprehensive study on the parking side, council member.
Okay.
But there is possibility, and there's height restrictions, about 35 feet, so there's definitely possibility to look at that.
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly not on brand for Newport Beach, clearly, so I think I'm certainly in favor of looking at doing something in that area, for sure.
Mayor Protam O'Neill?
Yeah, thank you. I mean, we've been looking at this for years. There's not a good answer. So I think it's one of those times where we look at this, realize that the slips are probably, you know, the most important part of this, providing marine access. And so if it gets us to the point of, you know, making sure that we have someone solid in there that, you know, can come out and suggest to us how best to manage, operate that, put some upgrades into it, and then also work the buildings out as well, that's probably, at this point, it's probably a good idea to see what's out there in the private sector. So I'd rather us have someone come to us with a full-blown idea instead of trying to do the public-private partnership route. So I would probably, I think I'd support the third option and get out there and see what's out there. Thanks.
I just think that the garages out there are interesting. I mean, I've been out there before and seen them, and it's, you know, a curious use of that property. And I'm just wondering, like, Lauren mentioned that they're tied to the slips, and so is that part, you know, it's not really a traditional marriage between, you know, garages and the slips, but is that something that we need to be considering?
Thank you, Councilmember Grant. The slips, the tenants are required to have a slip in order to have a garage. There's just a waitlist for a garage. There's only 32 garages available for lease, but 172 slip tenants. So the proposed, highest and best use study proposes to densify the number of storage units so that more slip tenants could have one, and they could use them for storage of fishing poles and, you know, other boat-related equipment.
Oh, okay. So I was looking at it the opposite way, that we would lessen the use of garages because there might be a higher and better use, but I guess all that'll come out in the mix and in the design process.
Councilmember Wagon?
Yeah, I like the Galley Restaurant. I think it's a fixture of the city. So what do they look like as far as, I saw pictures of the apartments, of the garages, and a little picture of the pavement that kind of showed. What's their structure like? Do they need a lot of TIs there?
The space is about 1,400 square feet, including some storage garages that they have for kind of their dry storage area. The restaurant itself is about 1,000 square feet. You know, it's in the same condition as the rest of the building. We would, you know, look at maybe incorporating that into the redevelopment, but retaining the tenant and working with them for, you know, relocating on-site during construction, that kind of thing. The idea would be to keep them, though.
Yeah, what is the business owner, you know, saying in these discussions? Have we talked to them much? Are they amicable to changes there? Do they have a preferred option on any of these? Or are they kind of left out of the discussion process at this point?
We just haven't reached out to the tenants yet. We just wanted to get feedback from the council first before we made any step forward to the tenants and had that discussion with them.
Yeah, looking at the revenue there, I'm not in the restaurant business, as one of my colleagues here is, but I'm not sure if they're maximizing their potential or if they need, you know, something to jumpstart their business to, you know, cover those improvements. We'd probably rest on them making those improvements over us if it's a business, or would we, you know, be able to kind of partner with them on certain aspects of it?
Yeah, I mean, we would look at the Galley Cafe and look at more additional outdoor dining, because that's become much more popular. They don't have any. So I think if we provide those types of incentives, I think that, and then that can increase their revenue stream, too, if we have more dining capacity for them. But that's some of the stuff that we want to look at.
Yeah, I have no interest at all in selling any of the land, but, you know, finding a way that we can either get it redeveloped on somebody else's, you know, like we do with, like, say, the Lido House Hotel or something, that would be great. I want to make sure that we preserve the land that we own, but, you know, have somebody else tackle a lot of these improvements.
Thank you. Councilmember Bravery?
Yeah, I'm in favor of the RFP, just sort of see who we get, and similar to, you know, a Lido House Hotel situation. And most marinas don't provide storage for the boat owners. Irvine Company doesn't, California Rec doesn't really. And sometimes boaters have dock boxes where they can store their stuff. But inevitably, chemicals get in the dock boxes and get into storage areas, so paints and varnishes and, you know, used motor oil. And being a boater, I know because, you know, so I think most people, you know, bring what they need down to their boats and then take it back with them, and, you know, it's the fishing poles they put in their car and bring them down. I think the whole garage thing is a potential safety issue for whatever, if we've got residences above, that kind of thing. And obviously, to someone's point, you know, could be potential more parking that'll probably be needed in a project. So, you know, this came out of a different era. Providing these storage for, you know, boat tenants was great. And the whole do-it-yourself thing has sort of gone away, and boaters today have newer vessels, and they don't require quite the same level of maintenance that wooden boats did back in the '40s and '50s and '60s. So I think that's kind of a holdover from that, and it's a whole different deal down there now. So people that are organized just figure out, bring what they need down and take it back home, or leave it on the boat, that kind of thing. So, but this is a pretty, this is a pretty exciting little project, at least from my point of view, to really make a difference there with that marina. And the possibility of providing extra space to the galley or whatever operators there, some outdoor space, I think is a really good idea. It's a little secret hideaway, and it's just another neat part of our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wagon?
Yeah, one thing I forgot, too. So the apartments that are there, are they required under SB 330 to remain apartments? Or can we have a different concept for those?
So we're not precluded to remove those apartments?
You have to keep them?
No, we do not have to keep those apartments.
Okay, gotcha. Okay. And has there been any kind of thought to that? Maybe get out of that business and then maybe move to some other, as you were saying, it could be a safety hazard as well underneath the garage. What's under there, and then you have apartments above?
Certainly. So we did consider the SB 330 Avenue for the residential use. We don't think we need to maintain that. We do have the Surplands Lands Act, the SLA, so we do have to notice HCD. We have to give affordable housing developers an opportunity to submit a proposal, and we do have to negotiate in good faith to them. We think this is a very unique property, very unique constraint. We don't think it's viable for an affordable housing project, but we still have to go through that process. So it is a process that we'll have to go through.
Got it. Thank you.
Wonderful. I want to thank Steph for bringing this up, as, you know, we constantly look around our city and see things we can improve upon. I think this is a great piece for that. From a personal perspective, I think an RFP is definitely a great way to go, and it sounds like that's a general consensus up here. You know, not that we want a 25-year ROI on this to replace a building that will then need to be replaced again. And, you know, I think that it could be conceived a lot better outside of the city itself. You know, we're not in the building of new projects, so, you know, I would like to put my support behind issuing an RFP and kind of moving forward in that process, so. We need anything else from us over here?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Just, I just want a point of clarification. I know Mayor Protam O'Neill was bringing up the slips, so I just want to get some clarity here. We were talking about the buildings only. We weren't talking about the slips. Does the council want us to include the slips as a redevelopment opportunity, or just focus on the buildings? I just want to clarify that.
I mean, I have no issue including the slips as an opportunity. I don't necessarily know that... I don't necessarily know that we have operators that can handle both of those pieces, but if, you know, if we find someone out there that can, I think that's definitely a viability to improve. I don't think we talked about the cost of replacing the dock spaces, but I imagine it to be fairly astronomical.
Yeah, no, that's, that's fair. I, I'll rescind the discussion about the slips for now, and we can come back around to that. We'll just talk to the buildings.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
Great. So let's go to public comment on this item. Any public comment on this piece? All right. Seeing none. Can we get a show of hands in support of an RFP on this project? Wonderful.
Let's hear yours.
Excellent. Thank you guys very much. Wonderful. Now it's time for public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. Any public comments on agenda and non-agenda items? This would be a first. You can just come on up to the podium. I do appreciate that you raised your hand, though. That was excellent.
Hello, everyone. My name is Alex Gomez, and I live in Newport Beach, and I'm going to be a senior at Sage Hill School next year. I'm here today to propose an educational social media campaign to improve the recycling habits of the people of Newport Beach. I'm the president of Bloobin Group, a service group at Sage Hill that focuses on sustainability and recycling in our community. For the past three years, the members of Bloobin Group and I have been making monthly trips to beachside recycling, a small recycling plant in Huntington Beach. To prepare for these visits, we have collected recyclables from our peers, family members, and friends. Over the past few years of doing this, I have learned a lot about the difficulties that come with the recycling process and how important it is to recycle properly. Recently, I have directed focus to putting together a concise list of 10 memorable things that members of our community of Newport Beach can do to improve recycling habits and to make Newport Beach greener. Each of these tips have been cross-referenced through multiple websites and have been confirmed by CRNR, the recycling company for Newport Beach. Today, I am here to ask for your support in this education campaign. I have put together a series of 10 posts that I hope to be able to post on the City of Newport Beach Instagram account with 18.5,000 followers, which is a huge and effective platform for such an important education campaign. I hope to spread these posts over the course of 10 weeks, with one a week. Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question of the council?
Sure.
May I please ask for your support by posting 10 Instagram posts on the Newport Beach Instagram? If so, what is the process to make this happen?
Yeah, I'll tell you what. Since Sage Hill's up in Newport Coast, and that's where I am, if you want to come grab my card, you and I will sit down with John Pope, who runs the public information, he's our public information officer, and we'll figure out how to, how to make something like that work. We actually have obligations to do public messaging on recycling under some of the state codes, so we'll be happy to work with you on it.
Awesome. Thank you, S.
Thank you so very much. It's really been a great civic engagement day, hasn't it? I appreciate this. Before Mr. Harv reads the closed session announcements, do any council members have any conflicts to announce?
I do. I have a conflict with Idan.
Oh, please, head on, yeah, head on up if we're, I apologize.
I'm Bonnie Morrison from Newport, and I took my two granddaughters to Mariners Library, and I asked them to pull some books for summer reading, and unfortunately, this is what they pulled. This is in the children's section, five to 11. A girl often rubs her clitoris. A boy often rubs her penis. Both the clitoris and the penis are sensitive to the touch. A person may have a warm, good, tingly, exciting feeling all through the whole body. Masturbating is good. This feeling can become more and more intense until it reaches a peak of climax. At that moment, a male may feel, may ejaculate. A female may feel strong, exciting sensations just in the area around the vulva and throughout her body. A female may feel some wetness, and it goes on and on and on. It's horrific. There's chapter after chapter with pornographic pictures on every single page. This isn't the only book in our children's section, five to 11, that they pulled. Everything from the trans to everything gay, but mostly pornographic, too. I love the one where they teach you about how your parents are swingers. This is Newport Beach. This is, we're in Newport because we feel pretty safe here. We're the bubble, right? The bubble is falling apart. I mean, this is not appropriate for children. This is what my granddaughters pulled to read, and I took it away, of course, and we got other books. But this shouldn't be in a five-to-an-11-year-old category. You want to put it with the high school kids, that's fine, but not with children. You wouldn't take a five-year-old to an R-rated movie. You wouldn't give your seven-year-old a martini. This is not okay. This is wrong. I mean, it's bad enough today, AB 957 passed out of the Assembly where they're going to take your children away at 12. If you don't go along with the trans issue, and then they're going to press child abuse charges on you. Now, that passed out of the Assembly today, onto the Senate, which you know it's going to pass out of the Senate, and Newsom will sign it. So we're being attacked in every area, from TV to the movies, to the schools, because it's in the schools, and we all know it, and it's getting worse and worse and worse. I mean, I can't even go to the library. This is not perfectly normal. It's not for a five-year-old, six-year-old, or seven-year-old. I'm asking you to please tell the librarian to move these books out to an appropriate age group, because this isn't it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Hello, Mark Rogerson. Very well said. Thank you very much for speaking. I am...
Guys, hey. Please, thank you.
I'm unable to take my kids to the library anymore either. Born and raised in Newport Beach, parent of St. Mark's. We have issues of the homeless people coming over to the St. Mark's property from the OCTA area bus stop and trespassing onto the property and charging their phones, using the restrooms and things like that. It is a preschool. They, it's an all-female staff. While I don't think anyone should be attacked, I'm especially prone to protect the people who are protecting my children, and so they're having to go hand-in-hand and ask the homeless people to please remove themselves from the property. They're not listening, and so they're having to then call the police. We have filled the gap by hiring our own security guard, but I don't know how long one person can stand to the masses that have seemed to be accumulating in this bus stop. My mom happens to live in Coronado, where they have zero homeless. The mayor there has been on national television, speaking on national news syndicates about how he accomplished that, and that was by saying that no one is allowed to camp in Coronado, which is a beautiful area if you've ever been, and it's so close to downtown San Diego, where there's so many homeless people. So I'm wondering, is there anything that I can do to help with this issue? And if there's anything that I can possibly do to help protect our children, please do let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. Your speakers?
First, I want to just say that I'm deeply offended by the other speaker's anti-trans comments, which seemed irrelevant and gratuitous. I also want to say that books in the library, I took my kids to Story Hour, you know, every week when we moved here, it was great. Books in the library are typically arranged by reading level, and the book she's talking about, I read it was, the reading level was ages 10 and up, so not for five-year-olds. I mean, just like there are, gosh, I forget, my kids are so old now, but those Greek mythology books that are full of adventure are in the library, they're not, they're also not for five-year-olds. They're violent, but they're in the same section because everything's organized by reading level. And I know the librarians were always very helpful to my children, helping them find what they were looking for. So I also just wanted to say that I read online Judy Blume was talking about growing up, and she was talking about books that were banned, including her own. And the main point she was making was she had a friend whose child had a book that, I haven't read, it's perfectly normal, cover to cover, but I've read that it does include descriptions of sexual abuse, along with descriptions of how babies are made and all the stuff that typically come in a book like that, and apparently masturbation. And Judy Blume's point was that she had a friend whose child brought her a book from the library and pointed to the sections on abuse and said, "This is me." And that's how the parent found out that their child was being abused. So to me, that outweighs any, you know, accidental grabbing by a child too young. Like, the value of that is really crucial to children. And also, my kids, through no fault of their own, were both sent porn by the time they were 10 years old. It was horrible. This book is not porn. This book provides accurate information about bodies and sex for kids who may be hearing things that are not accurate. So, I mean, I feel like for schools, it's not up to us, thankfully. It's up to the school board. I know they have a multi-step process for choosing books for the curriculum. But one of the books that my child was very upset by in fifth grade was called My Brother Sam Is Dead. I think it's still in the curriculum. And it's about the revolution. So they talk about beheadings in graphic detail. So I guess what I would propose also is that if a 10-year-old or a nine-year-old, as my child was nine at the time, can learn how to murder someone by chopping off their head, maybe it's okay if you, if they check out a book, if they're interested in what is this on my body and what happens if I touch it. I mean, if you, as a parent, have a problem with your child learning about their body...
Thank you.
Do what she did. Take it away.
Next speaker? Any other? We're going to, we're going to hold off on the clapping. I typically don't allow it at all. Please, if you have any other speaking, please come up.
I'll just start by asking a question. I was led to believe that there was going to be a discussion of homelessness. Is this the appropriate time to enter comments, or is that going to come later?
We're, uh, public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. So we do have an agenda item at the end of tonight's meeting, which might be a little later. You're more than welcome to make a public comment on that now, but this is also for non-agenda items.
Okay. But I could wait till...
You absolutely may wait.
So I would just, sir, I would just note, our actual regular meeting starts at 6:30, and we have quite a bit on the agenda, so you might be here really late. So I would just suggest if you're here now, probably a good idea.
Okay. Well, I had, I had sent a letter to you regarding the homeless situation, and basically wanted to urge you to try something different. You know, I think this is, it's more than, it's a bigger problem than any one city, and so I wanted you to try a regional approach. Four years ago, when I first attended one of these sessions, I posed a simple question. If I gave each of you a few hundred dollars to buy clothes for the homeless, do you think you'd stretch your dollar farther by shopping at Neiman Marcus or at Walmart? That's a no-brainer to me. So why should it be any different if you're shopping for low-cost housing with a limited city budget? Isn't it oxymoronic to try to build affordable housing in an expensive place like Newport Beach, which has some of the highest real estate on the planet? Wouldn't it make more sense to partner up with some of your sister cities and acquire a piece of land somewhere out in the Boondocks at a fraction of the cost and build many more units of shelter there for some, for the same amount of money? I'm talking about a regional supercenter where we can achieve economies of scale and providing a wide range of services, ranging from mental health evaluation and treatment to drug and alcohol rehab to job training and career counseling. In short, everything that would be needed to get people back on their feet. Incoming clients would be triaged to determine their needs and be matched with whatever kind of treatment fits best. If you agree that what we've been trying hasn't been working, that things have in fact been getting worse, and that it's not compassionate to let people live in squalor and filth, and that homeless encampments are a health and safety hazard to the community at large, as well as to the homeless, and if you agree that, given the limits of government budgets, the public would get a lot more bang for its buck by building shelters and treatment facilities on less expensive land on the outskirts of developed areas, then please partner up with your sister cities and counties to support a regional solution similar to what I've proposed. At least such an approach might actually put a dent in the problem unlike virtually everything else that's been tried. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker? Please. Thank you, guys.
Good evening. I'm Debra Klein. I'm a homeowner resident of Newport Beach and a mother of two. I have a nine-year-old boy and a seven-year-old daughter, and I am horrified at what the speaker, two speakers ago, just said. I would never want my son or my daughter to pull out a book in the kindergarten section, even if it was rated for a 10-year-old. We are finding it consistently. Mariners Elementary Library, Newport Beach Library, in the kindergarten section, on the ground level for any child to pull out. So I don't care what it's rated for, these kids have access to it, and they're coming to their parents, and they're asking questions that we shouldn't have to answer at this time for a nine-year-old and a seven-year-old. It's, it's just completely inappropriate. From what I understand, I, when I was finding out about this, I didn't know who to go to. And I understand that you guys are in charge of the budget for the library, so I'm coming to you and asking for you guys to do something, whether it be disciplining the librarians for allowing these books to be in the kindergarten section or pulling their budget. I'm not sure what the answer is, but I would request, as a parent, that you look into this. The other thing I learned is that the city is doing movies in the park. The next movie coming up is called Turning Red, and I would request that you look into it, look at the reviews. I know it's Disney, but Disney is not Disney anymore. It's not a kid-appropriate movie at all, and there are plenty of other movies to choose from. And I know a lot of parents, I saw on Nextdoor, a lot of parents are talking about it, a lot of parents aren't, we're just not sending our kids to it, which, you know, it's okay, but if you're doing it for the children, then let's do children's movies that are appropriate. The third thing I wanted to talk about was the homeless issue. I sent all of you a letter, I don't know, an email, I don't know if you all got it, but I had started with the Orange County Board of Transportation, because I was told that they were in charge of the homeless problem we have at the bus station. I was told that by a police officer who was removing the homeless. They emailed me back about two months later, and I forwarded the email to all of you. The only one who responded was Lauren. Basically, they're, they're pointing the finger at you. I understand that potentially the sheriffs are also responsible. From what I've been told, one of the issues is that we are the only city who has public restrooms open 24/7, and that's attracting a lot of the homeless. We also have a lot of wealthy people who are providing them with tents and toiletries, and that's probably not helping too much either. I don't know the answer to the issue. I know it's a concern for everyone I talk to, every business owner, everyone who goes shopping. When I take my children to the baseball fields, I can't let them go in the bathroom. It's really scary. We see sleeping bags and needles. This is Newport Beach. This is kind of crazy that we have to deal with this. I take my cleaning girl to the bus station, and I'm always scared to leave her there. So I have talked to other cities, and I know, like, Laguna Beach had an issue at the bus station. I don't know exactly what they did, but I was told that they cleaned it up and they, they made it less unmeasurable for the homeless. I've also been told they're doing a pickleball court maybe there. Anyhow, I would love to see some attention paid to this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Guys, please. Next speaker?
Hi, my name is Vieng Nguyen. I'm a resident of Newport Beach. We've been here for over 20 years. I have four children who've grown up here, went to Harborview, and now they're 15 to 22. So when I was nine years old, my parents packed me and my three siblings up, left everything they owned behind, taking with them only what they could carry in their hands, and embarked on a journey with no certain destination. And they did this because they did not want to raise their children under a government that represses open exchange of opinions, exerts control of the media, and bans books they find objectionable or even uncomfortable. So I'm always very concerned when I hear about discussions of removing books from libraries in my community. Now, one of the concerns I know that some of the speakers here bring up is the idea of parental rights. Now, I just want to point out that removing books from libraries... Now, I just want to point out that removing books from libraries, restricting access from library shelves entirely circumvents parents' decision-making authority. If you take books from shelves, if you remove access to books on shelves, essentially this limits or removes the choices that all parents can make. Now, on a more practical level, we know that libraries that remove books or limit access to them have faced lawsuits. This is simply because it's illegal for public facilities to favor one political view over another. And even if the library or the school system wins, it is costly and damages can be substantial. To the idea that the previous speaker made about perhaps finding librarians, making librarians who are public employees legally liable for distributing certain material basically would result in higher municipal insurance costs. So there is a real significant financial angle to this proposal, the discussion we're having. I would not want the city to spend our tax money in this way. Thank you.
Next speaker. Guys, please. We're, we're trying to be civil. All opinions are great, just let's not clap for each one, okay? And is there any other speakers I have out there for non-agenda items? Public comments? Okay, let's bring it back up here. Closed session report, we have a conflict to announce.
Mr. Mayor, am I allowed to comment on any of that?
Sure.
Yeah, you know, I have a, I have two children that go to Mariners Elementary. They're aged eight, they're just finished second grade. So when I received some of the social media posts about this particular issue with the library, I started asking some questions. I met with our library services director, I met with our city manager, and went over to Mariners Library. I talked to the principal at Mariners Elementary. So it's kind of two issues here. The books that are, are referenced are in our entire system, and then we have the Mariners' Branch Library, which is a unique thing, and mostly, I would say, a very positive thing because of the eight elementary schools in Newport Beach, Mariners Elementary gets unlimited access to Mariners Library. That's pretty cool, and that's really nice for my students because they can walk over during school hours and...
So this isn't denied on the agenda. It's okay to briefly respond, but it's not on the agenda, so we really can't get into too much detail or have a big discussion of...
Yeah, so what I just want to say is, there are, an MOU that's expired with Mariners Elementary and Mariners Branch Library, which is through our public system with the Newport Mesa, so Newport Mesa School District and the city. I think we're going to have some discussions moving forward about what we're going to do there, but Newport Mesa does things based on age-appropriate, so they're not, that's not part of the discussion. And then the city, which does things on reading level. So there's two different styles, and we can look at maybe potentially something, but I get what you're saying, so.
Thank you. Okay. Any conflicts to announce on closed session?
I do, yeah. Item B, Conference with Real Property Negotiators with Seymour Beak, he gave more than $250 to my campaign in October of 2022.
Thank you. Mr. Harp, do you have a closed session announcement?
And I have a conflict in the...
Oh, I apologize, Eric.
As well. I'm a shareholder of several of the companies referenced in agenda item, sorry, I'm not looking at it.
It's agenda item A, and I believe you...
Okay, so I'll just be hanging out here until you call me in.
All right, thank you, Mr. Harp. You have a closed session announcement?
No, just closed session.
Okay, so the city council meeting, closed session, to meet with legal counsel, decide whether to join the plaintiffs in the litigation titled Orange County Water District versus 3M Company and N Ray Aquias Film Foaming Forms Products Liability Litigation. We'll also be meeting with real property negotiators regarding negotiations with Seymour Beak, and that's related to the properties at 406, 408, and 410 South Bayfront. We'll also be meeting with legal counsel, decide whether to initiate litigation in regards to one matter, and to discuss the performance of the city manager, city attorney, and city clerk, as well as labor negotiations related thereto. And that's all set forth on the agenda under items 4A through E, and based on potential financial impact, the city manager and city attorney will be recusing themselves from the labor negotiation item. Thank you.
Thank you. We're recessed until the 6:30 regular meeting.